Hello and welcome to the big picture. The advent of the new BJP-led government at the centre is heralding some very key changes in governance. One of the things which may change drastically is the way the Planning Commission will function in future. The commission set up through a cabinet resolution in 1950 has been mainly involved in planning and allocation of funds to states apart from monitoring the utilization of these funds. However, there is a widespread belief that the commission as it has functioned all these years has outlived its utility. In fact, even former Prime Minister Dr Manmohan Singh in his last address to the commission members before he laid down office just under two months back had wondered whether the tools and approaches relied by the commission was designed for a different era. Prime Minister Narendra Modi, who has been critical of the functioning of the Planning Commission during his days as Chief Minister of Gujarat, is said to be contemplating major changes in the way the commission should function. There is also talk of scrapping it altogether. We will discuss today whether the Planning Commission in its present form has become redundant and if so, what should be its future shape and form. To discuss this, I have with me Professor Kirit S. Parekh, Chairman, Integrated Research and Action for Development at IRAD and former member Planning Commission, Mohan Gurswami, economist and visiting fellow at the Observer Research Foundation, Dr Santosh Merotra, Director General, National Institute of Labour Economics Research and Vivian Fernandez, senior economic journalist and author. Welcome to all of you. Professor Parekh, you think that the Planning Commission needs a drastic change in the way it functions?
You know, I think... I think we have to recognize why the Planning Commission was constituted in the first place. If you know, one of the former deputy chairman of the Planning Commission, Professor Lakravala had said that Planning Commission is the only lobby for the poor in the country because there are lobbies for all other ministries and other things, but for the poor, this is the one lobby that exists. So, I mean, in that sense, considering that Planning Commission was constituted after the Second World War when we became independent and that there was a large amount of inequalities in the country, there are lots of poor people, wealth was unequally distributed, so were assets of various kinds like skills and education. So, in that kind of an environment, you needed a planned economy. And if you had looked back at the end of the Second World War, the previous thirty years, then you would have seen that really the Soviet Union through planning had become from 1917 when the October Revolution to 47, you could say, had become one of the major economic powers through planning. That if you had seen that during the war, Second World War, both UK and USA had used quality control, price control and various other things. So, actually, it was a general consensus among all economists or most economists around the world of that time that you need government, active government policy, you need a planned planning economy. And we decided on a strategy of a mixed economy. Later on, it become a mixed-up economy, that's a different story. But I think to the extent that there are still poor, there are issues of various kinds, we need some form of a mechanism, call it Planning Commission, call it whatever, to think in terms of what kind of policies, programs you need to bring inequality, to reduce inequality, let's put it in that sense, to have a more inclusive development. And I think the issues of environment and climate change have also brought in other reasons why you need something to coordinate the concerns of environment and other things of quality of life in a different way. So, we need a mechanism. Whether it should be the current level type of Planning Commission or not is a different issue.
Some mechanism is needed.
Some mechanism is needed.
Mohan Gurswami, it's very interesting that Prime Minister Manmohan Singh, in an article recently, one of the former members of Planning Commission said in 2009, when he addressed the Planning Commission members, the new Planning Commission members, he made the same, you know, observations, Dr Manmohan Singh, about the kind of approaches and tools which the Planning Commission using is maybe outdated and things like that. And he repeated the same thing in 2014 before he laid down his office. So, nothing changed in those five years. So, why do you think that had happened?
Well, not because of the Planning Commission. You know, I entirely endorse what Dr Parekh said, you know. The Planning Commission actually just doesn't speak for the poor, it speaks for the common man in this country. The other lobbies are all...
It is expected to speak for the common man. They have been doing it also.
It does, it does. It does quite effectively.
Yes.
You know, without the Planning Commission, this country would be run by the industrial lobbies.
Right.
Okay, and by the chambers of commerce. So, I think you need somebody to speak for people and speak for the country as a whole. And the Planning Commission does that quite effectively and quite well. But what went wrong with the Planning Commission? Now, why didn't Dr Manmohan Singh address it if he felt that something was going wrong? And that is typical of them that, you know, when you go, you give a parting kick and go, saying that, you know, it didn't work well. Of course, Planning Commission didn't work, you know, didn't innovate and didn't adapt to changing circumstances. But, you know, there is this tendency, you know, originally when it was conceived, it was conceived as, you know, having developing a huge matrix and then monitoring and imposing that matrix on the people and the nation as a whole. But that had moved from there, you know, that the matrix was impossible to impose. You couldn't dogmatically say that, you know, so many pocket calculators will be made and so many tires would be made, you know. So, I think it moved on and Planning Commission to that extent was flexible. Industrial de-licensing took care of that dogmatic model. And I think it needed to go further, but you need people to speak for the women, to speak for the children, to speak for the environment, to speak for farmers. And I think sometimes the Planning Commission itself became impervious to the needs outside. This is what my concern, for instance, the last plan and the current plan, the emphasis on agriculture had come down, you know, as a part of the whole, from the first plan to the twelfth plan, there was huge decline in the appropriations for agriculture and sixty percent of the country still depends on agriculture.
Right.
You know, so I think to that extent, the Planning Commission didn't protect the common man, poor people. The allocated huge resources for telecom and all these sectors could have come from private sources. You know, the Planning Commission could have taken a different call on aviation for example. You know, we give, at India, this is a pet peeve, we've invested almost sixty thousand crores there.
Right.
And it's a dead loss. And I think some of these things, Planning Commission missed the bus, but it also reflects the kind of leadership Planning Commission has. It's really is done, the head is the Prime Minister and you have a planning minister. Now, you know, it's quite amazing that today I was noticing that there is a minister for planning and he's taking an interim meeting of the Planning Commission. You know, first of all, Minister of State, who was in the Defence Ministry last time, you know, what is the interim review is he going to do?
In fact, but it's very strange that it's always the planning minister sits in the Planning Commission, his office is in the Planning Commission. So, what kind of synergy was there in the past, we don't know. Maybe we have heard some of the planning ministers expressing absolute dismay, saying that they don't have any work.
Absolutely. Because MOS, and MOS...
MOS.
And MOS in the entire structure, unless he's got an independence charge or he or she's got independence, has no work.
Yes, Professor.
The Minister of Planning actually really plays an important role in terms of answering questions in the parliament.
In the parliament.
And representing so-called the Planning Commission in the parliament. So, I think it was answerable to parliament through the Minister of State.
Through the Minister of Planning. Let me get Santosh. Santosh, you know, one of the things which is being said is that when the Planning Commission, as Professor Parekh was pointing out, when it was envisaged, you know, the setup, there was a completely different kind of environment in this country, there was not much private capital, there was, you know, public sector, public investments were more important. So, this, it was, it was the need of the day, it was felt all over the world, in fact, as Professor Parekh was pointing out. But now that the things have changed dramatically in the last twenty years, you know, more and more private capital, private sector has become so powerful, so there needs to be structural changes. You think that these structural changes should happen?
Yes, structural changes should happen, but I think the reasons that in a sense you were giving just now, that the economy has changed, the structure of the economy has changed, private investment has increased, for, you know, therefore, you know, structural change should happen is not the right reason at all. If that was true, how come in China, after the economic reforms began in 1979, the Planning Commission of China became more powerful than it was during the so-called socialist period? So, the point that one has to remember is that, you know, this country with its vast number of poor and with the rapidity with climate change is happening, as Dr Parekh was rightly emphasizing, must never give up strategic planning because those countries which have actually given up strategic planning, as happened in Africa and in Latin America, have felt the consequences of that, the major adverse consequences of that. I have just returned from Brazil and I can tell you, senior economist and all my Latin American economist friends tell me that we in Latin America have lost the capacity for strategic planning. Therefore, it's absolutely critical looking and they have paid the price for it. You know, they're not growing at the rate at which we are and it's absolutely critical that in order to set direction, you know, not micromanage in any way, we will, I hope we will come to those issues in a minute, but I think even in China, for instance, the state Planning Commission's name changed to the National Development Reforms Commission. So, if our Planning Commission becomes a reforms commission, that would be a wonderful thing. And secondly, and I'll stop here, finally, it should also become more professionalized. Meaning, we, you know, the Chinese Planning Commission is full of professionals who've spent their life in the organization because they are professionals within the discipline that they've been working in.
Right.
So, that's the kind of Planning Commission that we need to, we need a professionalization, a specialization, it needs to be at the intellectual vanguard of disciplines so that, you know, strategic planning has a more professional edge than it has had so far.
Okay. Vivian, you know, one of the things we said is that the Planning Commission was more looking at the economic aspect of it, the social-political changes which have taken place was not taken into consideration in the planning and things like that. There have been dramatic changes in the way that the politics of this country has shaped in the last twenty, twenty-five, thirty years where different party governments rule in different states. So, those are things which were creating problems. Do you agree with that?
No, great. I think, you know, the Planning Commission, I don't think is, what you call heavy with economists, there are people from diverse backgrounds, NGOs and people who take our women's issues and so on and so forth. Prime Minister Narendra Modi has said that he wants a group of advisors. Now, you can have a group of advisors without a secretary, a Planning Commission is a group of advisors with a secretary over there with institutional memory in this country.
In fact, sorry, in fact, one of the criticisms about the Planning Commission, it just functions like any other ministry, it has, it's got a structure, you know, it works, functions like a ministry itself.
It is quite possible that, you know, it does not, it is, there are delays, people have been, I was speaking to a former secretary of the Planning Commission, Sudha Pillai, who was also a Labour Secretary, and she was telling me that the Planning Commission should not have virtual veto powers, which means everything has to be approved by the Planning Commission in principle.
Every single paise of the plan fund has to be approved.
Delays set in. Now, that does not mean that just because that delaying does not mean that you do not require that function. After all, resources are finite, someone has to allocate those resources, the finance ministry can do that, but I think, you know, it's good to have a body which is at an arm's length distance.
From the government.
So that ministries can, if they have their grievances conveyed to the Planning Commission, the Planning Commission then can then go to the Prime Minister, who is the chairman of the Planning Commission, to do an appellate function and then allocate resources, number one. Number two, you require a body that is able to deal with interstate development issues. You have an interstate council in the Home Ministry, which I think rarely meets and that is there to adjudicate disputes.
More security issues and things like that.
It's more to do with disputes regarding river waters and all those things. You require a body which will adjudicate interstate development issues, take up the causes of the weaker states like the North East, those states which are affected by left-wing extremism and also more importantly, a function which is not doing very well is as a clearinghouse of ideas. For example, in, we have a number of good development ideas across states, but you know, we have the silo mentality. It's the job of the Planning Commission to break these silos and not just to bring out booklets about what is happening, you know, in portlet development in Gujarat or something like that, but to have workshops in Delhi or wherever, get the secretaries, get the person who's done that good job in Gujarat or elsewhere.
The best practices.
Get all the best practices. Clearinghouse of best practices. That is what I think the Planning Commission should do.
Dr Parekh, you know, one of the things which is being discussed now is that part of the work functioning of the Planning Commission will be shifted to the Finance Ministry, allocation of funds to states and things like that will be done by the Finance Ministry and Planning Commission should just become another think tank. Is it a, is it a good idea?
I think you can see the role that the Planning Commission currently plays is kind of one is the coordination across different ministries.
Right.
Now, we had actually at one stage, seven, eight ministries involved in the energy issues. Now, the new government has at least combined three coal, power and renewables as one ministry, which is an excellent idea. It would still require some coordination across ministries.
Somebody to coordinate.
We need to coordinate, some, someone who looks at in a policy sense across different ministries, across different ideas and different sectors and comes out with this, with ideas and policy suggestions which make sense. So, that's one function, I think you, somebody has to do it, call it whatever you want, but you do it. See, in the US, how do people do this? They have committees of the Congress and they have huge open hearings where all kinds of think tanks and others put their input. There may be one way of bringing that kind of a government or non-governmental inputs inside these things.
Bringing more stakeholders into the planning process.
That's right. The second thing that Planning Commission does, as you pointed out, it does allocate resources across state. Now, you can say, okay, resources across state should be allocated by the Finance Ministry, but you still need to have some mechanism by which the states can learn, are they doing the right thing, is it going in the right direction, are there any...
Why can't the Finance Ministry do that job?
Finance Ministry is a huge, you know, then, okay, you can call it Finance Ministry's planning wing or does that, but somebody has to do that function. Whether you think Planning Commission is the best suited to do it, I think it is because Finance Ministry would more tend to be more, you could say, an auditing kind of a procedural type of an exercise. We need something which has a more functional, more output, more effectiveness-oriented viewpoint at least. So, I think a non-Finance Ministry body might be better suited to do that. The third thing I think is that, that, you know, it, we need to have programs for inclusion, for social programs and development and across states there are differences and so on and we need to have measures by which we can bring this, some measure of inclusion across states and in countries. So, somebody has to design these programs. Now, you could say, well, why the Planning Commission, can't the ministries themselves do this?
Right.
But the ministries can do it, but I think it would still, I think many of these issues cut across things. So, call it Planning Commission, call it whatever, but you need something that's, okay, I will have a thing which designs how to bring in, reduce poverty. Now, you might say, I'm going to cut down all these poverty, anti-poverty programs and replace it with one, one uniform...
Some omnibus program.
Omnibus cash transfer program and forget about everything else. That's one way of doing it. You can do that, but then you have to see really, how am I going to effectively, that can be given and you can do that kind of thing, eliminate that need. But you still need to think in terms of skill development, in terms of education, in terms of providing various other social services.
Welfare, welfare schemes.
Welfare schemes. So, I think you need something which really has a viewpoint on a relative importance of different things, on how do we bring in across different states a reasonably balanced development.
One of the criticisms, no, no, one second. One of the criticisms which Prime Minister Narendra Modi, as Chief Minister of Gujarat, used to have against the Planning Commission was that, you know, it is too, he tries to control too much, there should be more decentralization and things like that. And there is, there is another point of view. In fact, the Rangarajan Committee which had been set up to look into the, how the Planning Commission, Rangarajan Committee had suggested that, you know, the Planning Commission should perform more of a strategic role and leave things like budget management to the Finance Ministry.
Well, you know, first of all, as far as planning is concerned, the Finance Ministry doesn't have the institutional depth or the institutional capability of doing it. This is a multidisciplinary exchange, you know, exercise, it involves a cross-section of specializations, Finance Ministry doesn't have it. And particularly an institution which is under a transient bureaucracy and a transient politician cannot perform this. You go to have a long-term institutional view of what is happening all over the countries and the Planning Commission does that job well, okay? Now, chief ministers always chaff under planning because chief ministers would like the money to come and then, you know, be free to do whatever they want. Now, to some extent, the Finance Ministry does try to check.
Every, every, every chief minister has a complaint against the Planning Commission.
Absolutely, but the Planning Commission, you need, you know, you need somebody to monitor and review programs and processes and where money, earmarked money is spent. You know, chief ministers would like to spend money wherever they want, saying that, let us decide, do chief ministers part control to the Jilla Parishes and to the districts? They don't do that.
They need to.
You know, they need to. That's why you need to have more decentralization. I think giving states power is only encouraging satrapies. If you want real decentralization, you need to go to the districts and to the mandals and to the taluks, which they're not willing to. You know, no chief minister is willing to do that. But to say that the Planning Commission as an institution is, you know, to be thrown out because, you know, somehow, you know, because this is the guy who gets up and says, don't do this, this is the guy who says, what did you do? You need, you need to target, you know, if something went wrong with education, it's not because Planning Commission get that the third-class syllabuses the AICT has, it's the Ministry of Education did it, you know, in case something...
So, what you're saying is that, you know, there are efforts to pass the buck on to the Planning Commission where it doesn't do.
You know, but imagine what happens where a system where you have nobody responsible, nobody is there for a long term and, you know, all these guys are coming, six, seven months, you know, average tenure of an IS officer, as per the DAS report, is seven months.
Yes, yes. Professor.
I was just going to, I support what is being said because really, many state chief ministers would like the money to come to that without accountability. Now, Planning Commission brings in some...
And the freedom to spend.
Yeah, and which is perfectly all right to help them if we can develop a mechanism for accountability. And if they in turn are willing to devalue the fund to a local level and give it to the Jilla Parishats, to the Panchayats and give them the freedom to decide what to do. We need to think in terms of if you want to remove all these things, work out a mechanism by which accountability at all levels is transparently enforced.
One small point, you know, Planning Commission in India is not like the communist Ghosli Plan. It is not omnipotent, omnivorous, you know, doing everything all the time. Yeah, it is a much smaller, much more restricted, much more restrained organization and probably, you know, to some extent, this is the last repository of conscience in the government.
Okay. Santosh, you know, another thing is that it has, one of the complaints is that it has two overarching financial powers, those, that kind of financial power should not be there for that, it should be diluted to a great extent.
Well, that's an issue of detail and I think that does need to be sorted out, but I want to reinforce the arguments that both Mr Guruswami and Dr Parekh have made. You know, locating the planning function within the Ministry of Finance has attempted to be done in other countries and it has only weakened the planning function while the finance function actually tends to dominate the planning function in those countries where that has happened. It's a very, very bad idea because, you know, the Finance Ministry has a certain perspective on any program, including welfare programs, and that's, that's not a very good, good idea. On the other hand, you know, the idea that we are all arguing for is that there should be a coordination function of a quote-unquote Planning Commission, whatever its reformed role may be or reformed structure may be. It's not just coordination. You know, this country is full of wonderful, you know, state successes in specific areas. The Chhattisgarh, you know, government runs a great PDS, Tamil Nadu does a great nutrition program and runs ICDS very well and so on and so forth. But you know, there is very little learning across states that's happening and if there is one mechanism of ensuring, an institutional mechanism of ensuring learning across states and a replication of successful models across states, the Planning Commission should be one, but unfortunately, it has not played that role very effectively so far. And I mean, the Prime Minister's effect has rightly hinted at some of this, that, you know, there are great examples of many successful programs in many parts of our, of our country, but somehow there is great difficulty in ensuring that replication. Why can't the Planning Commission do that? And this requires, which is what I was saying earlier, this requires a certain, certainly greater degree of professionalization of the, you know, bureaucracy of the Planning Commission itself. You know, only members alone, you know, we've had a great crop of members who were technocrats over the last ten years, you know, members alone can't do that. You need a bureaucracy or a technocracy within each division, which is actually a specialist technocracy.
Okay.
Which is what happens in China. That's what I'm trying to emphasize here.
Okay.
That this learning across states can happen only when there is, when there is that technocracy within each division within the Planning Commission.
Right. In fact, Vivian, that is, that is one of the points...
Let me just admit, one, one, one more point about the...
Quickly, quickly, yes.
Plan versus non-plan expenditure point. No, very, very quickly, the plan versus non-plan expenditure, you know, which is in a sense what you were hinting at, it's very important that that distinction is done away with. That's a recommendation that emerged from a Rangarajan Committee report last, you know, two, two years ago itself and it needs to be implemented. We are the only country in the world which has this distinction and it's, it's a distinction which has actually tended to distort our public expenditure priorities and needs to be done away with as rapidly as possible.
Okay. Vivian?
So, regarding, you mentioned about...
No, there's also another thing that scrapped these five-year plans, you know, like, one of the things is that scrapped five-year plans, the Planning Commission should look at longer term things, let's say ten years, thirty years and things like that. I want, I want all three of you to respond.
Five years is a good enough time. You have seen longer term planning in the case of cities, twenty-year plans. I mean, those becomes, those plans become meaningless because the situation is so dynamic. So, I mean, five years is a good, long enough time, number one. Number two, I also feel that the Planning Commission should have a say in the allocation of resources.
To the states.
Because if it does not have that say and also in the coordinate, with regard to the ministries, because if it does not have a say, then it becomes a mere recommendatory body and no one will take it...
That is what, that is what is being suggested by some people.
And no one will take it seriously. But the more important thing is also that the person who is heading the Planning Commission should be a person of stature. For example, why do we invest so much of credibility in the Reserve Bank? Because the people who have manned the position of the governor have been people of stature. So, it's very important for a Prime Minister to select a person who commands respect, also because you have a Planning Commission which was set up without legal backing.
Right.
I mean, it has been set up by a...
Cabinet Resolution.
So, you know, its legitimacy comes from how it is perceived among the people.
Exactly.
So, that is very important, I feel.
Yeah, I think it's quite important for the Planning Commission to think in terms of policies that look at long term.
What about fire plans, scrapping fire plans?
I think fire plans are required, but fire plans have to cast in the kind of a larger perspective. For example, if you want to do energy planning or energy policy, even for five years, you have to have fifteen, twenty-year perspective because the project takes longer. If you want to do urbanization, that doesn't mean that you freeze the plants for twenty years because urban cities have to evolve.
Yeah, and as we say in the dynamics...
They have to grow, they have to adapt to their changing needs, but you need to develop a strategy that, okay, I'm going to have this hundred new cities, hundred smart cities, what do you mean by smart cities? What kind of a strategy will have?
Who will do the planning for this?
So, that they will be really not planned in rigid structure, but they would really dynamically evolve as needs change and that it would really become a functioning thing. So, somebody has to do these things.
I think, I think some of this anger, some of this anger against the Planning Commission right now, which you're seeing in the present presentation, is because of the specific circumstances under which this Planning Commission function. The chairman, deputy chairman and the chairman were, you know, close comrades. The deputy chairman acquired overwhelming powers, you know, he would become a much larger-than-life personality, which he shouldn't have been, and you know, he became much too intrusive in the states, you know, and to some extent, they were playing...
So, you're saying that this was a, this was a personalized problem?
I think it was a personalized problem and I think, you know, you've got to get a system where the Planning Commission head, the executive head is a true professional, a person who's looking at the macro picture all the time and, you know, not getting involved in politics and is not close to Centre Zopa, not identified with certain parties and certain people and certain ideologies.
Okay. I think on that note, we need to end. It has been a very fruitful, I think, discussion, whether a Planning Commission should be in the form and shape that it is at present or not, but there is a consensus that there has to be some mechanism to do the kind of job which it is being done, how it should be done and all. We'll wait and watch how the new government will approach this issue. Thanks to all my guests, Santosh Merotra, Professor Kirit Parekh, Mohan Gurswami and Vivian Fernandez. Please keep watching, we'll come back with another issue on the big picture, same time on Monday. Meanwhile, have a great weekend.